Hello.
You wanna clarify this?
No.
That's not gonna hurt.
You don't, you don't have to, but I want you to see something that I'm gonna write.
So this is a photo, sis.
No, we're not there yet, wait.
Okay, we're getting, we're getting to what photos.
I wanna show you something. And I'm gonna give you a hint that this, something I'm gonna show you is going to be useful for the test.
Was this the last thing we studied, like after, like right before the last test?
Yeah, exactly, but, but it wasn't on the lapses, we, we ended with fermentation. Okay, so this is the overall, overall formula for cellular respiration. This is glucose. One sugar, one glucose, and six oxygens are used up in the process of, of this whole cellular respiration. You give off six CO2, six waters, and you get thirty-six ATP. That's a lot, that's good. But let's look at the one for photosynthesis, same idea, but photosynthesis.
Isn't it backwards?
Almost backwards, yeah, as you say, backwards. It's six CO2 plus six waters. Now, but our energy source in this case is sunlight.
Sunlight, yeah. That's why I said sugar is basically crystallized sunlight.
That's right, crystallized sunlight, oh, that's what she said in here. And so, and you get out of it C6H12O6. And what's that waste product or byproduct?
Uh, uh, O2.
Oxygen. So it is, I mean, you know. Let's put it this way, in order to put CO2s together, it takes energy, takes energy to fix CO2s and reduce them. And, and, uh, and you, the energy ultimately comes from the sun, ultimately. And this byproduct. And, and, and the fact that there is oxygen given off. Hmm, we'll kinda, hey, we'll come back to that in just a second, okay? That's an important idea. But it's important if you really see these are almost exactly opposite, except that, you know, one is using the energy of the sun, the other is giving off energy. We're breaking down that glucose. But let's go back to questions a bit more about, about photosynthesis, just remind yourselves how that works. So photosynthesis. So, you know, in words, the energy of the sun is used by plant, well, by chloroplasts. What was it say, by plants, but also it's true for blue, green.
Uh, bacteria or algae, they're not actually algae.
Algae, cause they also, you know, anything that has chloroplasts, uh, like algae and stuff. Okay, energy of the sun is used to fix CO2. We'll define what that means again, just remind yourselves. The energy of the sun is used to fix CO2 and make glucose. Now that's very simple terms, you know, a lot of other things going on, but, okay. We said fixing CO2 is not the same as fixing your dog or your cat, right?
It's attaching.
What do we say fixing CO2 means? May, may, meaning it's hooked on to an organic molecule.
Can you say that word again?
Yeah, I will, I'll say, so this word fix means, oops, means to attach the CO, remember, CO2 is inorganic, remember, that's one of the few things that are, has carbon, is considered inorganic. Means to attach the CO2 to an organic molecule.
Which means generally carbon or hydrocarbon.
So it's gonna attach, it turns out there's a five-carbon compound, we didn't get into any of the detail on this.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, so but, we, but we need, way back when I was talking about oxidation reduction reactions. I talked about carbon and I said, hey, CO2 is the most oxidized state of carbon.
Hmm.
Methane, you know, since carbon was hooked on hydrogen would be the most reduced state. Sugar, sugar's somewhere in between, somewhere in between. It's not totally reduced, it's not, it's partially reduced, partially oxidized. But it's got a lot of energy available, but it's something we can use, you know, for energy. So let me put another word up here. So in photosynthesis, we wanna, we need to fix the CO2. And that's what fixing is this. And then, this isn't necessarily part of this fixing, although it's, it does have. Then the carbon, I'll just say the CO2 needs to be reduced. Okay, cause, cause that CO2 is so oxidized, so we need to reduce it. Meaning, and what's that mean, attaching some hydrogens to it, that's all, well, exactly, right, bonds and hydrogens. So let me put that in. Then the CO2 needs to be reduced, or I should say, and the CO2 needs to be reduced. I won't even put the word there. And the CO2 needs to be reduced by attaching E minus and H plus to it. Now this is the overall idea. Okay, that's the overall idea, we haven't talked about any photosynthesis yet, which was the original question, but we need this to make sure it all makes sense. Okay. So then we're gonna talk about photos, about, and again, this is such huge complication stuff, complicated stuff, but I'm just giving you the highlights of it, so it makes sense, yeah.
Wait, and is the, um, I, I thought that the, um, and the H comes from the breakdown of water?
Yeah, they do, exactly, yes.
In, in the light reaction and that kind of thing, like?
Right, and that's, and that's what we're gonna get to right now. Yeah, yeah, no, you're absolutely right, that's good. Let, so let's actually talk about it then, now, let's actually talk about that, so let's, so photos, so when we're actually talking about photosynthesis, that we divided into two reactions. Most of the time they're going on time, they're ten minutes, but, but, so that, this is just the overall idea, just in words. So now we'll be a little more specific, so, again, this is photosynthesis. We divide it into what we call the dark reaction. Now leave some space here, well, several, no, light reaction first, my mistake. We're talking about the light reaction and dark reaction. The dark reaction is the one that's called the Calvin cycle. My organic chemistry teacher. Nobody helped, anyway, okay, so the light reaction, dark reaction, okay, so there are all kinds of pigments. And, well, wait, let's, let's say one more thing, where does it occur? In eukaryotic cells. In the, in what, what, what's the, what's the, what's the, chloroplasts, go ahead. But it also occurs in blue-green bacteria, they don't, and if you remember, they think that the origin of chloroplasts was one particular blue-green bacteria. So, but we're talking about eukaryotic cells.
Yeah, but, bluegreens are prokaryotic, right?
Yeah, they're prokaryotic, but it still occurs in the same bait, same way as we're gonna be talking about. It's just that it's not a separate compartment, it's in the, uh, the actual cell itself, as opposed to here, you know. Eukaryotic cells got the separate organ, okay. So the light reaction is called the light reaction because the energy of light is driving it, so it doesn't happen at night. Once you have grow light, not grow lights, unless you have, I'm just kidding, just kidding here. Anyway, no, but the point is that you need, you need a light source for it in order to make it work, and so we're talking for daytime. Uh, but if the light reaction is working, the dark reaction can start working right away. It's just that once the sun goes down, then of course, you know, the, the dark reaction can continue as long as it what's been made in the light reaction, as long as there's still some there, then you can do the dark reaction. So the dark reaction, don't think it says you have to, it has to occur in the dark, no, it doesn't have to occur in the dark. It just doesn't have to have a light shining on it to make it work. The light reaction only works if the light shines, sun shines, okay? So there are all these various pigments. And these pigments are part of what are called photosystems. And they divide into photosystem two and photosystem one. In the reverse order, because the photosystem one was discovered after photosystem two. Uh, or what did I just say, yeah, yeah, so, so they, so they, they, but, but in terms of the order in which they, they work, it's photosystem two first, so. So anyway, photosystem one they discovered first, but photosystem two is the one that you talk about first, so. Anyway, it's very confusing, don't worry about it, but, so let's just put this down, the light reaction.
So there's just two?
Yeah, yeah, so, but, so there are pigments. Pigments that absorb light.
And these aren't?
And these, and these, and I'll say, in these pigments, these are part part of the two photosystems. And the photosystems, I said they're called photosystem two and photosystem one. And it's, they, I don't know why they can't discover these things in the right order.
So they just like found it, and they're like, of course two.
Well, no, the first, oh, no, they just found this one photosystem, I mean, they just, they figured out what they call the a photosystem.
Okay.
Then when they discovered the other ones, they go, oh, now we have a second one, so we'll call the one we found first, photosystem one. And we'll call the one we call, found second, photosystem two. But in terms of the way they work, we usually talk about this first.
Some point there.
All right, but here's the point, these pigments absorb light, and when they absorb light, so the pigments that, pigments that absorb, no, there are pigments, there, I should say, there are pigments that absorb light. I should've made a better sentence. There are pigments that absorb light. And these pigments are, are, are part of the two photosystems, okay? Now when these pigments absorb, absorb light, what the light does is it excites the electrodes on these pigments. Excites them to a higher energy level, and they get picked up by some kind of a molecule that is a carrier for these electrodes. So let's put this down. When light hits the pigments. The light has to be a certain wavelength, a certain wavelength towards that and others.
Red, pink, red, blue spectrums.
E minus electrons, I know, I just rather than writing out electrons, I keep putting E minus.
You know what it means.
And that's supposed to be plural, even though it doesn't look plural, I'm gonna say it's plural. When light hits the pigments, electrons are excited and picked up by carriers and go through girlfriend, and electron, electron transport systems.
ETS.
ETS, electron transfer systems. We know about electron transport systems from Krebs cycle, electron transport system, so then, so once you know about that, you get the idea. Is electron chain, is that the same thing? Yes, chain, chain, yeah. I always call them electron transport systems, but a lot of folks will call electron transport chains, same thing. Yes, I know. And, and Krebs cycle can be called the TCA cycle, or they can be called the citric acid cycle, I mean, yeah. So usually, we, but which one we, easiest to say, or we like to say, or our favorite.
It's, it's preferences, yeah.
But it's very equivalent, doesn't matter which one you use, you know, as long as you realize there are the others in there, they mean the same thing. Okay, but, so we know about electron transport systems. So, um, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just had a few questions.
Yeah, yeah, well, let me get to that, let me, so, okay, so so here's the deal, we have light shining on these photosystems. And, 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 okay, Karen, here goes your photosystems, here's photosystem two. When light shines on photosystem two, what's made is ATP. Okay, photosystem ATP is made. Now, what we're talking about here, we're, we're, we're talking about electrons are going through the electron transfer system, and so I've already told you that. So now I'm saying, okay, photosystem two, ATP is made, that's it. Photosystem one. NADPH is made. NADPH, what is NADPH though? It's like NADH. Remember NADH? So one of those reduced coenzymes. We'll, we'll come back to those in a minute.
And that just has phosphorus on it?
Say it again.
That one just has phosphorus on it.
It just has an extra phosphate, and that's why they call it NADPH. It's just a little, actually, it just turns out to be a little stronger reducing agent than NADPH, it's just the way it is. Okay, but now look at this, one thing before I go on, but also, I don't, we're not gonna get any more details about these photosystems.
Phosphate.
If you look in the book, look at these charts, it looks like the electrons are kicked up to the, out of the, remember electrons, it can't be just kicked out of the, out of the orbit. They can, they can only be transferred directly from one molecule to another, that's why I said they're picked up by carriers. But if you look at the diagrams in books, it looks like, oh, the electron just shoots up there and then somehow gets into this electron transfer system. No. It, it, it gets excited and is directly connected to this carrier that will then transport it through these electron transfer systems. Um, but here's the thing. These pigment molecules, they only have a certain number of electrons, and if you keep kicking their electrons up, up, you know, I mean, out of, out of, excite them and have them picked up by a carrier, they're gonna run out of electrons.
Yeah.
So we need something to replace the electrons. So so put this. The electrons remove from the remove from the pigments, works, remove from the pigments when they're excited. Are replaced by E minus from here's the, this important point, because the source that I haven't written there yet is the ultimate origin of these electrons going through the photosystem. That's, that's really the origin, I mean, you say, I thought electrons of the pigments, yes, but they have to be replaced, so ultimately what, what is, what is this? The H2O water, yes, so the electrons removed from the pigments when excited are replaced by electrons from
Oh, diffusion.
Splitting of water.
Yes, diffusion, or osmosis.
Splitting of water. Okay. And what happens is the O2, the O, in fact, I'm gonna write it as one-half of an O2, no, I want to be H2O, sorry. H2O water is split and, and to two hydrogen ions, plus two electrons, plus
Ha, half an O.
O2 molecule. Does that look familiar? That's what we, that, the exact reverse of this is what was in, you know, in the, uh, Krebs cycle and ETS, when I said the ultimate, remember in the Krebs cycle and electron transport? What's the final electron acceptor? It was O2, half of an O2. Took a hold of two electrons and two hydrogen, it's supposed to be a two here, two hydrogen ions and two electrons, and became water. So it's just the exact opposite, in this photosynthesis, the water is broken up, it takes a lot of energy, you can, you can you know, do electrolysis and break up water with electricity, but it takes a lot of energy to break up water, but in the case of the plants, what's the energy source?
Sun.
From the sun is the energy source to break up that water. And what's the, what's a byproduct of that reaction?
Uh, oxygen.
Oxygen. And that's the oxygen that gets into the atmosphere that, um
The plants respirate, yeah.
They, the plants can use when they're doing respiration, reuse when we're doing respiration, you know. Anybody that's doing, um, uh, aerobic respiration needs oxygen. Where's the, hey, come in, come in.
You can wear a little pin.
Yes, one of these?
Well, I need like thirty colors.
Well, yeah, take. Yeah, I guess so.
You don't have purple.
Oh, good.
How, how can you lecture without purple?
I, I usually can't. Thanks, Wendy, you're welcome. Anyway.
Okay.
That's Wendy Rixi's turn. Okay, so, so what was that? I said, that's Wendy Rixi's turn. No, I, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't have said anything at all. But she is great, okay, yeah, she is. I've been her mentor, or person tour, cause I don't wanna use any gender stuff.
Ah.
Person tours. But, but not, not, but she is, she's really up on all the, you know, um, computer stuff, so she's teaching, she taught me how to use my CR, so that's why I finally cause the first couple of years she was here, I, I, I looked love.
Nobody uses it.
Has that, no, nobody?
Not much people use it, now. They still don't know how.
No, I know, that's right, but you know, actually, we're hoping to get a new system.
Yeah, yeah, who, I, I was wondering who your, who your engineers were, cause I, I mean, I don't know much, but I know a few places where they went wrong.
Yeah, well, you know, the, without getting into too many, without getting into too many political things, this my CR apparently was, was if I understand the story correctly, previous president we had, and he was, he's gone now, unfortunately, he's really terrible. He apparently knew someone who had stock in the company.
Oh, nice.
He convinced the board to use my CR, and there are a lot better ones out there, I think, but we're, we're hoping to get a better one. Anyway, whatever, you got a good picture of, of Alex's head in there.
Uh, so, I've been moving it a lot, to, 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 to compensate.
People who are gonna see it on, if you don't mind. There's nothing about your head, it's actually nicely. Anyway, back where we were, okay, so, so so this is the light reaction, so the photosystem, this is as much as you need to understand about the photosystem, okay, Karen? But what I want you to realize is in the light reaction, what are the two products of the light reaction? ATP and an ADPH. And in the splitting of water, there's also, there's also oxygen being given off, okay? So that, you could say that's a, that's also a product of the light reaction. That's where the water comes, or the oxygen.
Oxygen, yeah.
Now what about the light react, the dark reaction?
Yeah, this is the one.
That's where the actual fixing of the CO comes in, fixing of the CO2 and reducing of
And the sugars, right?
So now this is where, this is, so in the dark reaction, this is where CO2 is fixed. And using ATP from the light reaction.
No.
And the CO2 is reduced.
Wait, so, the question is, the function of the dark reaction is to fix the CO2 to make ultimately what's used to make ATP?
Glucose, sugar.
Glucose!
Is that?
Okay, and the CO2 is reduced using NADPH and NAD from the light reaction. Now, if you go back and, when you go back and do the, uh, organic, I mean, sorry, um respiration, you go back and do the cellular respiration, you'll see it's very similar in reverse, though, you know. Well, I tell you, let me just finish this. So here's the point. What we want, what we wanna do in photosynthesis is to fix CO2 and make glucose. Fix CO2 is gonna take energy, drive that reaction, and it's gonna take something to reduce it. The energy that we're gonna use to make all the dark reactions, that was ATP. And the thing, the way to reduce it is getting all these reduced coenzymes, the NADPHs. That's what's made in, in light reaction. And then those things are what are used to fix the CO2 and reduce it, make sure, make sure. And for every six CO2s that are fixed, we'll get one glucose, cause glucose is C6H12O6. For every, so it, so it takes, we can actually write that down somewhere. Six CO2 fix to make one glucose. Now, if you go in and read, but, and see, I don't want you to get bogged down in the details, but if you go in and read the details, in fact, Alex, didn't you send me that, that one in? Or, or no, Sarah, she, Sarah, she went here, Sarah's the one that sent me the question, I think. And she was getting, reading the book, which is good, I'm not saying not to read the book, obviously, but there's a lot more detail than I wanted. They started talking about R U D P, and all this.
Yeah.
Ribulose diphosphate, that's, it, there's a cycle. And you start by looking up, uh, CO2 onto a five-carbon molecule, and that's the ribulose diphosphate thing. We're not gonna get into all that cycle stuff, so all you need to know is that, is this really, for my purposes.
Okay.
And you do need to fix the six CO2s, you say, one molecule, one CO2 under five-carbon molecule, but is that five-carbon molecules, or is there, and it has to be regenerated? It's very similar to the idea of what we're talking about with Krebs cycle and all that, but anyway, let me ask a question, let me make sure it makes sense, that what I've said so far, go ahead.
So the six CO2 fixed to make glucose is after?
So this would be, this would be one CO2 that's being fixed, and then the second one, and the second one, and the, I mean, third one, I mean, new.
So ultimately, six.
Yeah, ultimately, six. Just like ultimately, where the electrons come to go through the photosystems, ultimately from water. Even though initially comes from the pigments, but you gotta replace those by the electrons. So, so let me just state it again, and let me make sure it makes sense, so overall, photosynthesis. We call it the light reaction, the dark reaction. Light reaction requires energy of sunlight to hit these pigments in the photosystems. Electrons are excited, they go through electron transfer systems, two things are made. ATP and NADPH. If you, if I said, what is the origin of the electrons that go through the photosystems? Ultimately, you'd say four. Where do those electrons end up in the light reaction? They actually end up in this molecule, NADPH. Then of course, that's gonna be used to make sure. Anyway, but then the products of the light reaction are what are used in the dark reaction. One half the dark reaction, CO2 is fixed and reduced. But that requires energy, ATP, and reducing power, NADPH. Does that make sense?
The source of electrons in the light reactions comes from
See, well, yeah, what I would, I should've said the ultimate source, and you should write in the word ultimate, I forgot to write that in. Uh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, I did, okay. Yeah, so the ultimate source, so if I said, what is the ultimate source of the electrons in the light reaction? Electrons going through those electron transfers, it's in, say, water, in the splitting of water.
Water or splitting of water?
Well, well, what would the, so, so if the, if the ultimate sources, the water to the pigments are the
And these are what have the
I, I know they have, they have, they're, they're the source of, of collecting.
Yeah, yeah.
The electrons, so that would be the secondary source?
Well, no, I mean, obviously, you
Are you even asking that question anymore?
But you need the pigments, cause that's what's connected to all the carriers.
I, yeah, I, I got that, yeah, okay.
Now, wait, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Did you have one?
Um, yeah, go ahead, they can't answer, but maybe have one more. Yeah. In plant cells, it's, it's photosynthesis and the chloroplasts. Yeah, just chloroplasts.
The chloroplast is basically the water in there, right?
Well, the chloroplast is, it's like a mitochondria, it's got all kinds of membranes.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, they're all stacked up in these little things, they're called fillicoids, but, you know, I don't wanna get into all that. Too much. All right, but look, going, now remember we stopped at fermentation in the last exam, so, so cellular respiration is on it, as, as it's photosynthesis, that was in the beginning also. But just keep in mind, real quickly, let's just real quickly say something about this, in cellular respiration, what happens? Let me erase this, well, maybe I can answer your question real quickly.
I got it, Alex.
So you said you hadn't finished yet?
I haven't officially, I, I haven't.
So do you think it'll be in like the last one or a longer?
Roughly, roughly, that's my idea.
Since they're gonna, it's mostly just fill in.
Well, there will be some questions like Punnett squares for genetic problems. And remember, also, I said there would be some on dealing with, um, tra translating a, maybe a DNA into messenger RNA, and then transcribing that, transcribing that, and then translating the messenger RNA into what amino acids would be coded for. So you need to do the genetic code, now, and I'll give you a chart, I mean, you don't memorize it, I'll give you the chart, but you'll need to use a chart to, to do that, and I might even ask you about a mutation, how that would change, uh, you know. So those kind of things, and we can do some of that if you want, but let's just say something really quickly about So those kind of things, and we can do some of that if you want, but let's just say something really quickly about cellular respiration. Because there's similarities, kind of in reverse in a way, to what's happening with photosynthesis, so with with cellular. Respiration. Okay, we start with glycolysis, and glycolysis is not officially part of cellular respiration. What happens in glycolysis? It it is converted into two pyruic acids, remember that? Two pyruic acids plus two ATP. Remember that, and the pyruic acids are three carbons each. Glucose is six carbons, as we've already said. Remember this?
Uh.
That, oh my god, that was like twenty seven years ago.
But this is from respiration, you don't get very much ATP out of that.
Glycolysis doesn't get very many ATP. This is why glycolysis, if you went on to ferment, you would just convert this into something like maybe lactic acid or alcohol or something, you don't get any more ATP. But with respiration, you're gonna get a whole bunch more. Remember thirty?
Thirty, thirty four more, or if you use fat, forty four.
Well, forty four, of course, you don't.
Or forty two plus the two is forty four.
Well, no, but with fat, you don't even use glycolysis at all. It doesn't even go through glycolysis. That's the nice thing about fat, one reason why it's more efficient, it it all happens in mitochondria.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no glycolysis when you're breaking that fat, you ask.
Oh, yeah, it's just not glycolysis, it didn't imply breakdown of sugar.
It's a little more efficient, but yeah.
I I just was unclear about the the question about um. Why the Krebs cycle is a cycle?
Right.
I mean.
And and it's the same thing about why the Calvin cycle is a cycle, and I said a little bit about it in class, so I'll say a little bit about it right now.
Yeah.
But. It's not that big a deal for our purposes, except that it's just, they use the words and it's important to understand kind of what they mean, because it makes it make more sense, but let's just do this. So this is glycolysis, this is out in the cytoplasm. Right, remember that? No, I know, it's months ago.
What's the six in the parentheses?
Six carb, six carbon, three carbon. I just didn't wanna write out the word carbon, but just just. I'm just trying to keep track of the curve, this tiny bit there. So so this is in the cytoplasm, this is not officially for respiration, but now what happens is each of these guys, each of these pyruic acids. Okay, let's do this, each pyruic acid now feeds into, let's say goes into the mitochondria. So again, we're in a separate little compartment, the same as we were for photosynthesis, separate little compartment.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, so each pyruic acid is three carbons, so. A CO2 is released. And that leaves, leaving. A two carbon molecule. Okay. It leaves this, two C again, two carbon, okay? But now, without going into this detail, the two carbons, that two carbon molecule joins a molecule that's already there. It's a four carbon molecule that's already there, that makes a six carbon molecule, and then you start doing various chemical reactions, and another CO2 is released, another CO2 is released. You're left with a four carbon molecule, which is converted back into the original four carbons. That's why it's a cycle. But for practical purposes, without getting into all that detail, a CO2 is released, is released, this is supposed to be a release, sorry. Not leased. Not a car, you're not leasing it, a CO2 is released, leaving a two carbon molecule. Then, and the Krebs cycle. This two carbon, these two, I'll say these two carbons. These two carbons. Are released. As CO2.
So you get attached there with two molecules.
So what, so this is the Krebs cycle, so what have we done so far? We have, so what what are the products of Krebs cycle, well, part of them, so let's say, products of the Krebs cycle. I'm gonna give you half of right now, we talked about.
CO2 that goes into the blood and ingests to the pancreas and then is breathed out.
Starting. Starting with. Pyruic acid, one pyruic acid. Okay. So far, what have we said? We've said. This two, whoops. Little here, this one, I figured so that the best one, but. We got a CO2 out of here, and then suddenly we, we got two more CO2s. Should put two in there. And this was to be released, I'm having trouble writing my hand grammar here. So, so we started with a pyruic acid. What have we made so far from it?
Uh. Three CO2s.
CO2 molecules. But there's something else very important that's made in the process of, see, those are total, those are oxidations, we've totally oxidized those CO2s, those those carbons.
Carbons to get to.
CO2s totally oxidized, in the process, we've made a bunch of reduced coenzymes, in the DHs. So, so three CO2s plus, and I said I would, I'm not gonna worry about numbers, but just many. NADH. And I call those reduced.
Coenzymes.
Coenzymes. And then what happens if those reduced coenzymes? They feed into the. Electron transport.
Transport system.
So then these. Feed into ETS, or if you prefer, ETC. And without going into details of ETS, cause what is made, what's made?
ATP.
As the electrons, exactly, ATP. And as the electron, exactly, electrons in hydrogen, I shouldn't say electrons, as the electrons go through. The ETS. Many ATP made.
Thirty four.
And if you wanna remember, and you don't have to for my purposes, three ATP for every NADH that feeds in, so it's a lot.
There it is.
The ultimate, all those electrons are going through this, I mean, this this transport system, those electrons have to end up somewhere, where do they end up? The ultimate, the final acceptor of electrons?
Oh, uh, the. Final acceptor of the electron is water, yeah.
No, it's not, it's, it makes water, but where's it? Oxygen.
Oxygen.
It's oxygen to make water. And the equation, just to show you that, they say one half of an O2 molecule, or my, oh, you go one half of an O2, that's not why, it's just O. Cause we never get oxygen by itself, so it's a diatomic molecule, you have to get single oxygen. So you write this way, one half of an O2 plus two electrons, plus two hydrogen ions.
Makes water.
One water.
Yeah, one H2O. Okay. It's the reverse, okay.
So it's the reverse, so, so in photosynthesis, water is the origin of the electrons that go through those photo systems. In cellular respirations, in the during the ETS part, water is that final acceptor of the electrons to make water. Oxygen is the final acceptor of the electrons to make water. So to sum it up, just real quickly, going back to photo system, I mean, going back to photosynthesis. We have what we call the light reaction, the dark reaction. The products of the light reaction feed it, are what are necessary for the dark reaction.
And the dark reaction is where the sugar is actually made.
Dark reaction where you actually make the sugar, you end up making sugar. In cellular respiration, the products of the Krebs cycle go into the electron transfer system. So that's why, you know, when I ask you questions, what are the products of a certain reaction? So am I answering most of the questions on that? Are you, you, you have the separate questions? Yeah, yeah, go ahead, um.
I don't know.
Also, Krebs cycle.
What happened, thank you.
Well, see, now, these are a bunch of chemical reactions, there's a series of chemical reactions, where this, this, and I'm not gonna get into the details, but. We start off with the Krebs cycle, it's a four carbon compound that's already there, mixing with a two carbon compound, you get it, it changes and changes and changes. Those are all chemical reactions, a few of them are oxidation reduction reactions, where we make these kinds of things, but not all of them. Uh, whereas in the electron transfer system, it's just these electrons and hydrogen that are going through, no other molecule through, just the electrons and hydrogen. And in the process, a whole bunch of ATP is made, and then, you know, O2 is the final acceptor. So, but you can't have one without the other.
Yeah.
Because you need the the Krebs in order to make these, so that you can then have the ETS. But there's, and and just the same way, the the dark reaction is totally different from the light reaction, but you need what's made in the light reaction in order to get the dark reaction to function. Otherwise, it would just sit there, and it would, if you just have to find the dark all the time, it's not gonna be doing any photosynthesis. Does that make sense?
Yes. Wh- when you're done with all that, I wanted to go over.
I think we are, are we?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I I just.
I'm hoping in a good way, I hope it is sinking in, I don't.
Yeah, if there's, if you guys got any more questions on this.
But go ahead, what's your question?
Boy, it involves you probably erasing the board and going over the production of gametes, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
If I gave you like, say, uh. What is it, chromosome, it would be like.
Well, I gave you an example, didn't I, or did I give you one in there, or did I?
I don't know, is there an example in here?
Well, let's just do one.
That's kinda what I wanted to do, just to make sure I understand.
Pictures, you got pictures, both parts, okay, let's actually start, we can talk about that.
If, say, you had a a set of of, I guess it would be genes, it was like capital T, capitals.
Okay, now you want, okay, okay, so we don't even wanna talk about mitosis necessarily, just just in terms of doing a genetics problem?
Yes, for the gametes. I I get mitosis and meiosis pretty well, sometimes I gotta go back and check exactly what's occurring in which mitosis, or which or which, or which metaphase or which prophase, but.
Well, if you wanna briefly, not right now, we'll do your question first, but we can say something about meiosis and mitosis, just to make sure.
Yeah, cause there's people that aren't here, and should be asking these questions.
But let's, you, you're actually asking a genetics problem.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it. Let's, let's just, you wanna do like a dihybrid cross kind of?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do was exactly that, the dihybrid cross, just to make sure I understand how to.
Okay.
If if, uh, how how to write out the table, if I've got, say, capital T, capital T, capital G, and and small g, right?
Okay, so let's do, um. And we can make up, we can just make up something, or we can use the P plan, I don't care.
Uh, well, uh, just whatever, I don't care how we figure it out, it's just the dihybrids that I wanna be sure, right?
And we can say tall, dominant, over, short.
Uh-huh.
And we can say maybe the color, we can say the seed, seed color.
Green.
We'll, we'll say the seed is yellow.
Oh, yeah, that's right, the yellow.
Yellow seed. Dominant.
And green.
And by the way, you know, whoever, you just go with whatever they give you.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Dominant over green, we say. So what I tell you to do for when you solve these problems, I think the easiest thing to do is, first of all, look at what we're talking about, dominant and, and I mean, tall and short. Take the the dominant one, cause usually you use the capital whatever for the dominant.
T, capital C.
And in this case, it's tall, so we'll say, okay, so we use a big T to refer to the dominant, and then the small t to refer to the recessive.
Which is short, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and same thing with this yellow and green, we'll say a big yellow, big Y for dominant. And a little y for recessive. And then, then I say to do, write down what possible genotypes you can have, for possible genotypes. For, and for each of these, so we'll, let's put them, I'll put them. Possible. Genotypes. And for those possible genotypes, which, what phenotype do you get? I'm writing this down before we even have a problem stated.
Yes.
But I think that's, this is a good way to do it, because then you don't even get bogged down by what they're saying in the problem, you just first get through the information. So what are the possible genotypes for tall and short?
Big T.
Two big T, big, big T, big T, big T.
Little t and little t, little t.
Little t. And the two, the first two will give us a genotype of tall.
Mm-hmm.
And the last one will give us a genotype of short, right?
Yep.
Same kind of thing.
You mean phenotype, right?
Green. Two big Ys, big Y, little y, little y. So again, the first two gives yellow. And the last one will give us a green. So these are genotypes and what phenotype they give you, so now we've written those down before we've even worried about what the actual question is, okay?
Okay.
So now we'll state the problem. I mean, it could be heterozygous, could be homozygous.
Uh, if it's, it's, it's good, a heter.
We can do any of that, you wanna make one up?
He- like a heterozygous T there.
Heterozygous for height.
For, for, for height.
Heterozygous tall.
Yeah.
Heterozygous tall.
Oh, actually, let's make it a homozygous tall and heterozygous, um.
Okay.
The other way around.
I'm letting you do it, so that's fine.
A homozygous tall.
Homozygous.
And then, I guess, uh.
And and the same plan is one of these, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, let me, we're only left, so it's gonna be homozygous. No, he said, yeah, he said homozygous.
Yeah, homozygous tall, which means you're gonna have two big Ts.
And what do you wanna say as far as color?
Uh. A heterozygous.
And heterozygous for color.
Yeah.
Heterozygous for color. And you're gonna cross this with where you want the second guy to be.
Um. Let's do the same thing, a heterozygous tall. With, or no, a hi, oh, excuse me, a homozygous tall with a homozygous, um.
You want both homozygous?
On the bottom, yes.
Well, no, it doesn't matter, but we just wanna do something for, okay, but be- because you wanna be able to use the words, homozygous tall.
Tall, yeah, tall, no, that's.
I don't care.
No, tall, I wanted it both to be tall on the one, but then I wanted the 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 also to be homozygous on the second one for color.
And homozygous for what color?
Uh, uh, isn't it?
You asked me whether I'd be yellow or green now.
Oh, uh, heterozygous dominant, so yellow.
Okay. So now. Let's take this one and write down the genotype. So I'm gonna write down genotypes, the actual genotype. Now, the genotype is gonna, so what is a homozygous tall, what does that mean?
I mean, it's just gonna have two of the Ts, two cap, two big Ts.
And then heterozygous color.
Is gonna have a big Y and a small y.
Okay. Now we're gonna cross this with the other one.
Mm-hmm.
What are the possible, what are the gen, what's the genotype of this one?
Um, that's gonna be, uh, what is that?
See, we're only gonna have big Ts, you sure you don't wanna heterozygous here somewhere?
That, well, that was why I did it, was to to point out, someone said that you could cancel out the redundancies.
Well, you don't have to, yeah, you you don't need to make this many, but let's just do it, let's just do it. T, so it's gonna be a big T, big T again, it'll be homozygous all, what about the, it's gonna be same thing as this, right, big Y, little y.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no.
Oh, homozygous, sorry, 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 sorry.
And I was trying to figure out how the redundancy worked.
This is gonna be an easy problem, by the way.
Good.
On the, um, testing, you, I mean, on the questionnaire, you have, in an experiment AP, which is heterozygous for flower color and heterozygous. Um, for T color across, that is homozygous for white flower and hetero.
You wanna do this one, we'll do, you wanna do that one?
No, but, um, I guess, I guess it wouldn't, it wasn't saying, oh, nevermind.
You won't need a four by four, is that, you're gonna need a four by two in the one that I have in there. You won't need a four by four, is that? You're gonna need a four by two in the one that I have in there. This one, I'm gonna need a two by whatever, let's see.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out is how that works, cuz no, you're fine, alright, it it it, now you're in it, it's too late.
Okay, so let's, but let's, let's just do this, just.
Yeah, that's that's the simplification's what I, cuz I'll I'll do the whole big thing and if I don't need to, then maybe I won't.
Um, possible um gametes. That are made. Now, when you make a gamete, you have to have one T gene and one Y gene. So we want the possible different gametes.
So it's gonna be big T, big Y.
So, so you could have a big T with a big Y or.
A big T with a little y.
T with a little y. What about over here?
Same thing, it's gonna be big T, big Y, and big T with a little y. Oh, oh, okay.
You gave me homozygous.
Oops.
I was writing it, you guys corrected me, so I'm doing what you did.
No, no, and then then it'll be this.
This is really easy, this is just a two by one. This is a really easy one.
That's why I'm making him do it.
You only need to make a punnet square with the number of boxes as as as.
Is it difference? Oh!
Different gametes, so the the punnet square is gonna be two by one.
Yeah, well, cuz if you, doesn't matter what you do, the next gamete you make is gonna be the exact same.
So, yeah, because you did this.
But for ratios, isn't it important to reinclude them?
Let's just actually do the punnet squares.
Okay.
The punnet square is gonna be super easy, you're just gonna have it, like, it's just gonna be like this, so you're gonna have a. T with a big Y, big T with a little y, now we're here.
T big.
Big Y, so you're gonna have, so now let's see, nevermind, so we can see it. Big T, big T, big Y, big Y, big T, big T, big Y.
Little y.
Little y. Now, they're gonna be the exact same phenotype, right? Both of them are gonna be tall, yellow.
Uh, I get it now.
And 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 remember, they they have different phenotypes, but they're they're tall, they're both tall, yellow, so.
Okay, that's cool, I just.
But my point is, you don't have to make, you know, you only make them size punnet squares depending on how many different.
Gametes, okay, I get it.
Otherwise, you can do it with more and just, but it would just be you're repeating and then you could say, oh, I I could've come out with four tall yellows.
Yeah. Okay.
Same as two tall yellows.
That was why I made it so simple, cuz I I I I got how to do the big one.
But I can, we can make a loop, but let's just, we don't have to write up the whole thing you have on that according to quiz or the sample question, we can at least write it down without doing the whole problem.
Okay.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, let's do that.
So, so what was it? P plan? What was what was on it?
Flowers.
Uh, assuming an experiment with the garden pea, a purple flower is dominant over a white flower.
Purple and white, okay, so let's do purple.
Purple over white.
Okay, so purple, okay. Purple dominant over white, okay, and the next one? What was that?
Uh. Oh, oh, sorry. Um, also assumed for the seed covering smooth seed is dominant over a wrinkled seed.
Oh, the smoother than wrinkle, okay, so smooth. Dominant over wrinkle. So again, let's just do our letters, we'll say big P for the dominant. And little p for recessive. And big S for the dominant and little s for the wrinkle. And so now, to change these, we just. It's gonna be the same pattern, it's just a lot different letters here. So we have two, two big Ps. Big P, big P, big P, little P. Big, no, little P, little P. Ah, what am I doing? Big P, here, big P, big P, big P, little P, little P, little P. Alright, there you have purple. White. In a case like this, probably, if you have the big P gene, it says make a purple pigment. If you don't have a big P gene, just have two loopies, probably just don't make any pigment at all, and that's why it comes out white.
Right.
Smooth, you have two big Ss, big S and little s, or two little Ss, so we get smooth. Wrinkle. Okay, so what was this one? Now, read, read, who's 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 mating with whom, character?
Who's on first?
Who's on first?
Assume an ex- okay, let's see. Assume an ex- in an experiment with a pea garden, the purple flower is dominant over white flower. Assume the sea- okay, list of three possible gene genotypes for the flower and which, yeah. Okay, then list the possible genotypes for sea- okay, you've already done that. In an experiment in which heteros- uh, a pea which is heterozygous for flower color.
Heterozygous for color, okay?
And heterozygous for seed cover.
And heterozygous.
For the seed.
I'll just say for seed, but it's it's a smooth wrinkle, okay?
Yeah. Is crossed with a pea that is homozygous for a white flower.
Or white.
And heterozygous for seed.
So we have all that stuff down, now we just have to write down the official genotype of each of these. And then what are the possible gametes, then we do the cross, so we won't go through the whole cross.
No, I get, I get how to do this.
Let's just actually write down, just write this down.
Okay.
Heterozygous for color, so what's it gonna be?
Big.
Big P, little P.
Cuz there are difference.
P, little P, and heterozygous for C.
Big S, little S.
Could be crossed with homozygous white.
So little Ps, two, two tiny Ps.
And heterozygous for everyone to a big S.
Big S, little S.
Now, gametes, what are the gametes? Possible gametes?
Yeah, it's gonna be big P, big S.
You can have a big P going with the big S, you could have a big P going with.
Little, little S.
The little S, the little P going with the big S, the little P going with the little S.
Four gametes.
But again, let me say, if you you could write it down, but the important thing to remember is. When you form the gametes, you have to have one P gene in it and one S gene. By menial second law, it doesn't matter if you have, if the big P is in the gamete, it doesn't have any effect on whether it's gonna be the big S or the little S, so. Uh, these are supposed to be P, little Ps, I just having trouble writing it that angry, you know? Okay, never.
So for the second one, I feel it would be two possible.
And and the second one, how many different gametes for this?
It's gonna be.
The little P going with the big S or little P going with the little S.
Okay, so now, and then you'd only make a two by four at this one.
Two by four punnet square. You can make a four by four, but you're just repeating.
It's redundant. Okay, I get it now.
Makes sense?
Yep.
So I'll just write, I won't write it out, but I'll just say, so make a four by two punnet square.
When it says homozygous white.
I'm sorry, say it again?
When it says homozygous for white, it doesn't say whether it should be dominant or recessive.
Homozygous for white, but well, we had it, we already had it, excuse me.
In the beginning of the question, it it tells you which.
So when you make the punnet square, the four will have, you only have the four, the side with the four on the punnet square, this could be the the edge with the two on the punnet square. So you only need to do it, you know, and if you do it double and you come out, it's still not, it's not wrong, just you spent twice the amount of time you needed to spend.
No, no, and I get, I, that's fine. That was what I was concerned about, cuz I was gonna, each time I was gonna write out sixteen squares.
Exactly, and and if there were, if there were four possibilities reached, then yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Now, do you wanna look at something about myosis and mitosis again, the other questions, which yes, yes? You say yes on that?
Yes, I I wanna know about that. Remember, I don't know if you have access to a um. The side question.
To the which question?
Um, the side of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Number thirteen and also um especially number fourteen.
Ah, yes. Well, number fourteen, go back for the phone systems.
Yeah, that was the first one we answered.
Is there another fourteen?
Oh, sorry, fifteen.
Fifteen, oh, okay. Oh, yeah, 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 so there were there were my, so I did, yeah, okay. Ah, let's do, let's do both myosis and mitosis with four chromosomes. Let's do that.
Okay.
Just to see the difference, without getting into the details of of what's happening in each one, but let's just talk about it. So. Yeah. Exactly. And stuff is actually, I think it's kinda cool. I mean, some people are going, I don't know.
That's kinda, I I've. I I'm the guy that sent you the uh the article on on artificial DNA, so it's interesting to me, I'm just tired, man. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you'd answer the question, like, number seven, myosis is al- also called, I think.
Reduction division, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So let's see if we can do this sort of easily without going into too detailed myosis. Our cell is gonna be four chromosomes, four chromosomes. Say, two number ones and two number twos, right? And we can say the number ones are, here's a blue. And the number two, we'll make this a small blue, we're not gonna worry about crossing over in this case, I don't know. So here's the number ones, they're big ones, and number twos are little, how about that? So, and and we're assuming the blue came over. Just to make it easy. Now, we have to have S phase first, right?
Yeah, synthesis phase.
S phase first. Because we can't have mitosis and or myosis without duplicating all the chromosomes, right?
So, yeah.
So I say phases first.
Nuclear application.
Phase. All the chromosomes. Are duplicated, and as I just heard. And the duplicates are held together, the identical sister chromatids are held together. Duplicates are held together. Now, this is true for both myosis and mitosis. Uh, and called. What are they called again?
Si- identical sister.
Identical.
Sister chromatids.
Sister chromatids. I'm running out of paper.
Uh-oh. She took all your pens.
Sister chromatids. So what would it look like during mitosis if we had, I'll just do it like this. Just your little, you know, thing like that. Well, let's just do metaphase, let's just do metaphase. What's gonna line up in metaphase? In mitosis, now we're in mitosis, just regular old division of most cells. What's lining up? Each chromosome.
Yeah.
Now, each chromosome is made of duplicates, these identical sister chromatids, but actually, let's let's draw it with identical sister chromatids. Um, let's say, let's do this, let's say, after S phase. We'll have, we'll have, oh, I ran out of blues. My blue died, I guess if I remember blue.
That was the one you just put down.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have these identical sister chromatids. And here's some identical sister chromatids here. And here, these are two identical sister chromatids.
Alright.
So what's gonna line up all the individual chromosomes? So for example, we have, we have, this would be there, maybe. Maybe this little guy would be here and this guy would be here, maybe. And this would be here, oops. So number one, two, one, two, I just, I just did it like that, they 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 may have been next to each other. That's what's gonna line up in metaphase. In mitosis, well, each separate chromosome, of course, each chromosome is made of two identical sister chromatids. What about myosis one? Let's just talk about myosis one and talk about metaphase one. I'm not gonna do any crossing over, just.
What about prophase?
But I'm not gonna do it, okay, just just to save us some time here so we can do this, but let's just look at what lines up, so here's our. Spend a little apparatus, we still have the same thing here. What lines up in myosis one?
Tetrad.
The identical sister chromatids come together, so I have to line it up like this, I have something like. And then the red one. And I'll say maybe this one over here. Now I'm gonna have the reds up top, this time it's really bad.
And it's in metaphase one, that crossovers, were crossovers for?
Tetrad. So in 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 mitosis.
Cause I think I got screwed on that quiz by reading it out.
Line up, line up at metaphasic place. Whereas in myosis one, tetrad's lineup. At metaphasic place. So if you look at it like that, now if you look at it, you can really see there's a huge difference.
And in metaphase one is where the crossovers take place?
Yes, it would, it would, actually, it would be happening during prophase one and probably continuing on.
Okay, that's, okay, cuz I was worried, cuz we took a test on Tuesday and that was a question.
I don't think that metaphase is lasting very long, cuz once they get lined up, they start to.
So that, so the crossovers have already happened in prophase, so I did answer that, right?
I'm not showing crossover here, just cuz I didn't wanna get into all that. But you know the crossover would have already happened between the reds and the blues.
Okay.
Between the monogamous chrom- the chromatids of the monogamous chromosomes. So you can just see by looking at it, we started with the same original cell. What's that lining up in the metaphasic flag, in myosis versus mitosis? So what's gonna go to opposite poles here? Each chromosome.
Yes.
If they set the identical sister chromatids separate, but then they're gonna be called individual chromosomes, what are you gonna have here? Four chromosomes here, four chromosomes here. What's gonna happen in myosis?
The tetrad's are gonna line up.
Tetrad split up and one chroma- one of the number ones goes up here and the other number one goes down here. Now, each number one still has some sister chromatids, they're not identical anymore, they're still made of sister chromatids, but they're still, they're they're still called. That those two sister chromatids held together are called one chromosome. So what's happening here? The chromosomes are separating. So we'll end up with one chromosome, number one, one chromosome, number two, up here, one, number one, number two down here. We've reduced the number of chromosomes in half. That's the reduction division, okay?
So then the, then the second.
Half the number of chromosomes. Each chromosome is still made of two sister chromatids, we're gonna have to go through a whole nother myotic division to separate those chromatids from each other. So from myosis one, we'll get two cells, but then in myosis two, each of those cells separate, so from one cell, we end up with. Four gametes. So myosis, mitosis will end up with. End up with two identical cells, we'll say. Identical cells with respect to their chromosomes. But with myosis, myosis, let's just take away the word myosis, it's, when we end up with myosis, four gametes.
And then, yeah, they're separated again in myosis two.
One.
Chromosome.
Of each chromosome. Whereas this will have pairs of chromosomes. Whereas this will have pairs of chromosomes, pairs.
What is myosis, myosis is just to read to make cells.
So mitosis is just what the kind of division is gonna happen with normal cell division within your cells of body.
Okay.
Myosis is just to make.
Gametes.
Gametes, eggs and sperm.
Eggs and sperm.
So this would, this would be, I, since I took away the one year, this would be metaphase, yeah, this is metaphase one. But, but so, from one cell, from one original cell, myosis here will end up with two cells. Similar to the original diploc. Gametes, ma- myosis, you start with one cell, you end up with four haploid gametes. One, one, one of each chromosome.
In, in men, this is something that occurs all the time, but in women, this only happens.
Yeah, we can't stop making gametes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's right, with, with.
Till we're old.
With, with, in the ovary, you're right, in humans, the, the primordial follicles are locked in prophase one. They haven't even gotten beyond it, and, and it's, it's, if it, if it gets stimulated. Like follicle similar to a tumor, two or three, then it'll progress through. Um, um, prophase one and continue to finish myosis one. But it won't even go into myosis two unless it gets fertilized.
But, but men make, well, I mean, not their whole lives, but from.
Starting from puberty.
Beyond, they, yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't it your whole life?
But, yeah, yeah, no, 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 and it continues, no, but starting puberty continues on. But what happened, what's what we call menopause, I like to say personopause, womanopause, no, anyway, what we call, what we call menopause is when. All the eggs of primordial follicles and the ovaries have died off. And there's nothing to respond to the hormone. And that's usually around age, what, fifty-five or something like that, there's no magic age, it's a roughly. There aren't, there's just starting more eggs to respond, so, so.
But, yeah.
The cycle starts. The other weird thing about, not weird, it's just the way it works, and it's a good thing, is that in, in making eggs. In many cells, in many, in many animals, in making eggs, you make four gametes, but one is super large. And the others are tiny, just, tiny, and just don't do anything.
Or they fade to shell.
Huge egg, with all the nutrients in there and everything that would support a fertilized egg.
Because they rob all the other cells and stuff.
So it's huge, so, and they call, in, in humans, they call those three little things that are functional, polar bodies.
But polar bodies sometimes form a membrane around them, or they just, or reabsorbed into the cell. Yeah.
Degenerate.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, okay, what about some other questions, this, are, are you want any other questions on the myosis? So we didn't go through all the details.
No, that, that, just the, the rough overs is, is pretty good.
The, the important thing is to see this difference in between myosis and mitosis.
Yes.
What lines up, and that's the kind of question I'll ask.
And it's also important to know that crossovers happened in prophase, not metaphase.
Right, right, it's already happened.
Yeah, okay, that was my, that was my question about it.
Why is crossing over such a big deal, I mean, why do we?
That's how we get our biodiversity, man.
Variability, exactly, and all the variability, and in general, we assume that variability is good.
Yes.
Ellie.
What was number eighteen?
Loud, loud.
What does codominant mean in, you know, in writing?
Oh, those, oh, oh, yeah.
Codominant.
I- in regards to, uh, codominant, uh.
Talking about our relationship between two different people, we're talking about your genetics.
No, no, haha, you're funny.
Okay, codominant, that means there are at least two genes that are dominant, two alleles that are dominant.
The two alleles, that's what it is.
When two or more alleles. Predominate, and the example I gave you, which is kind of a nice one, that I might, I gave you, I think, on the question two. And the one I'd like to ask in the test. So what, be, pay attention. The example I gave was the blood types.
Alright, oh, cause.
A, B, O, blood types. And so, the, the, the phenotypes. For the blood. For, you know, if you have your blood drawn, they take your blood type, you could have a phenotype of type A, type B, type AB. Or type O.
So what's with the negatives and stuff?
That's a different, it's another gene, we call it protein D.
Okay.
And it, and it's, it's, you can, if you, it's not, the D is the dominant, if you make it, you're said to be. Uh, um, positive, if you have recessive, double, double recessive, then, then, don't make it, you're negative.
A little negative.
It's just another, it's just another, see, these, what these things, a lot of these are proteins, to be official, they're glyco-proteins. In your cell membrane, every red blood cell.
Okay.
Uh, and the, the so-called positive, negative, you know, is another, it's just another protein.
Okay.
And, and it's called RH, positive, because they first discovered in rhesus monkeys, the RH actually stands for rhesus monkey. It's the exact same protein that rhesus monkeys make.
Is that why they stabbed my kids foot a million times to find out?
Yeah, yeah, they did, yeah, yeah.
Does that, do you get that from the mom, cause my mom has baby blood, and my sister has A blood, and I have B.
Okay, do you know what your dad's is?
And this is a positive.
Oh, good, let's just use it, hold it, let's stop, let's stop, we'll, we'll, we'll use that as an example, it's great, let's destroy it, but let's just say phenotypes. Uh, but here, with, with the blood types, A and Bs are codominant. And O was recessive, okay?
Okay.
And you inherit two genes, one from your mom, one from your dad. Is that what? I'll close it, it's a little bit slavering than I am, I'm gonna tell her that too.
Was it, yeah.
I'll say possible genotype. Possible genotype, so if you're type A, you could have two. You could inherit an A from both parents, or you can inherit an A from one parent and an O from the other, you're still gonna be type A. If you're type B, you could have B, and a B, or you could have BL. I always say we don't wanna talk about that. If you're AB, if you're AB, that means from one parent, you got the AG. And the other parent, you got the AB, the BG, sorry, the BG. Because they're both are dominant, A says to make that protein A, B says to make that protein B, so you make them both. That's why they're codominant, to be O, you have to get recessive O from both parents. Cause the O doesn't say to do anything, so in order to be type O, you get the recessive O from both parents, your homozygous recessive. But keep in mind that, you know, A and B are codominant, so let's actually take, that's a good case, so.
My sister and I are twins, and she got A positive blood, and she, I got C positive.
So you're not identical to them?
No.
Oh, yeah, you're fraternal.
They call it fraternal, even though that means brotherly, but you could say sororal if you wanted to.
Yeah, soror, yeah.
They don't say that, they just say fraternal.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, let's take, let's, let's take the, what, the, what's really, you said your dad, let's say the mom.
My mom is AB positive.
Is AB, well, we won't do the positive, we'll just do the. We, we do it, it's easy, but we won't, and dad. Is O, so what's the genotype, this is easy, cause there's only one possible genotype for each one.
Yep, AB.
The genotype is AB, what's the genotype of the dad?
Small O.
Little O, little O. So, what are the gametes, possible gametes?
Yeah, there's not very many.
If you're AB, you, only one of those goes into a gamete, either the A or the B.
The B, so your gametes are A and B.
Have an A in it, or a B in. Your dad, no choice, he could only have an O in it, there's one, all his gametes have a, a gene for O.
And so not a.
So if we do a little point and square.
They would never have O blood types.
They'll never have good O. Right, but, but let's just, let's just, what, how would you go point and square on, just a two by one?
Yeah. Put the O on the bu- on the side there, and then the A and B.
So hit the, yeah, we need to do, that's what we're doing. A, B, and O, so, so if you're, if you're type A, your G, you know what your genotype, are you, are you the A, your sister the B?
I'm the B.
Yeah, so you know that your, that, that your genotype is BO, because you have, you got the B from your mom, and had the O from your dad. And, and, uh, you know, your sister has AO, now, what if you had a kid, let's say you, you have a person with B and an O. Mates with someone with, um, how about, how about someone like your sister had an A in it? Okay, what's something like that mean?
Well, then, that's three to one ratio.
O and H, and H, or A, or B, or the possible gene, gene, um, gametes. They could have a B or an O, this could be an A.
A or an L.
So we need a four by four, right?
Yeah.
One, two, I mean, two by two, sorry, two by two, here we go. There would be a B up here, an O here, an A here, and an O here, say.
So then, no matter what, it'll be a three to one.
You could have one kid born who was AB, person who was O, person who was B, and person who's O. So, so it'd be possible for your kids, if, if you had an, if you're AO, or you're, you're BO, right? And you married a, a guy who had an A, O, your kids could be any of these four. And you expect them to be, you know, one quarter of the time to be an AB kid, and a quarter of the time an A, I mean, you could get three of the same, I mean, you know, by, just by chance.
I don't know if this would explain any of it, but is that why O is the universal donor?
No, that, that has to do with the antibodies that you have, I don't wanna talk about now, but we will later, I think actually next. Lab, well, I don't know, with a clinic, we're in the next lab.
Okay, okay. Most.
Well, yeah, yeah, if you, in terms of donating and receiving blood, and, and as I said, I don't wanna talk about it now, but in terms of often. AB, AB can receive blood.
That's what RH negative is.
O can give to anybody. But O can only get from O. AB can get from anybody, A can get from A or O, B can get from B or O. AB can get from any of them. It's always best to get the ones you're. But does that answer the codominance, and this, this is a good one, that's a good example right there, but that's the one I might.
No, that's good.
Something like that I might put on the test.
Okay.
It's, it's, I want you to make sure you know what codominance means. And remember that I definitely told you, the simplest idea of dominance is, the gene says, do something. In this case, A says, do something, make this protein A. B says, make that protein B, you can make them both if you have, if you're AB.
Yeah, so if you have both, it'll, they'll both do something, so they'll both follow the commands, go down and get you. Alright.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Um, twenty-seven.
Which is?
Um, it says this question.
Yeah, 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 so you need to, it's like code.
Which is?
Oh, you, oh, here, under. Yeah, she just has a with her, she carries a with her, but she looks at it.
The codon thing?
Is that what codons?
That's codon, codon is the three things, the three things of code for a single amino acid.
One of these, I'm, I'll hand them out for the test.
Jackie, this second page is.
Do you have the second page? I only got the first page.
For, oh, I told you, there's two sets, study questions, I've gotta make them for you, but I, I will, I'll make them, but I have to do it in a few minutes.
It is on.
You have, you both only have the first page? Oh, you have the second page, okay. Yeah, you've got both.
Ah, here, sweetie, I'll go print out another one.
Oh, okay, you're gonna print it out, but yeah, there were two pages.
I have a printer, no problem.
Okay, but let's do it, let's just do it real quickly. So let's, let's, so let's do. And by the way, I will ask you something about what's in a quick, I don't know how much detail I have to do, but, but let's look at DNA. Let's just, I won't take that example, I'll let you work that example yourself, but let's just say you have DNA, let's do DNA. DNA, as you know, is double strand, so here's gonna be one strand, there's gonna be another strand, I'll just.
And if it's DNA, it'll be T and not U.
So, yeah, so let's do what, A, T, C, G, um, um, um. T, A, C, G, I can, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine's enough for now.
Okay, so.
What's gonna be here?
T. A, A, G, C, A. G.
G.
C, T, A, or T, C, G, C.
Okay, so, there's our double strand of DNA. Let's make a messenger RNA from that.
Ah.
Which strand? Well, I'd have to tell you which strand, because you can't tell by looking, um. Let's just say that the enzymes in your cell know, that, we won't, don't know just by looking. So let's just say we'll make a messenger RNA from that, so we'll make. Messenger R and A, we'll just say from the lower strand.
So that will be.
So I'm just gonna make a my line like this, and here's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. What am I gonna put here?
A U.
Remember, it's gotta be the complement, and if it's T, you're gonna put an A.
A, yeah, that's right.
An A, you should put a T if it's DNA, but.
It's U. U, C.
C.
G.
G.
T.
A U.
Oh, wait, yeah, you can't have Ts in it.
C, G. So I'm gonna come down here and write it, I'm gonna write it out. I'll write it out like this, I'm just gonna rewrite it, just so I can do it. A, U, U, C, I'm just rewriting is all I'm doing. Okay. So this is my messenger RNA, right? And I wanna say what? What, I'll say what amino acids. Does this code work?
Code for three.
Now, we need to do our, we need to do our codon, this is one codon, this is another codon. Another codon, these are the codons, right? Remember codons, three bases. Um, messenger RNA.
So they're not those two black lines right there?
Wait, say it again.
They're not part of the two DNAs.
No, we don't need to look at the DNA now, we're just doing this, 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 because the genetic code is based off of messenger RNA. Messenger RNA is kind of an intermediate, so we do everything for the message, yeah.
Why, um, on the top portion, why is it A, 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 T, and then one?
ATT up here?
Yeah.
I just made, we just made that up.
No, they're not.
But for RNA, you don't use T, you use U. Yeah.
This should be the same as this, except that where you have a T, you put a U.
If it's in RNA, there's, it's a U, and it's in DNA, when it's a single strand, it's, it's.
RNA, where you expect to have a U, you put it, if we expect to have a T, there's a U, RNA never has a.
Did you, did you just write it down?
So, what are you saying, so, 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 so I just made up this.
Yeah.
Just now, but knowing what this is, I can immediately say what this is, and if I say, now, let's cut, let's make a messenger RNA from this, this strand right here. The lower strand. This is what I would make if that was my messenger RNA, and I just rewrote it down here. All I did is rewrite.
But instead of the A transferring to a T, like it does in DNA, it becomes a U.
This, this thing down here is this thing, thing, my thing up here. I've split it over.
So it wouldn't be react, it wouldn't be reacting to the top line?
No, no, and that's the thing, that's what I was saying, when, when you make a message, there are two strands of DNA, but only one strand is used to make the message. Which one? Well, I just said use the lower one. The enzyme knows, because there are signals on it, to know which one to use. It's not arbitrary, I made it arbitrary, you said. Now, to say which amino acids, we have to look in that chart.
A, U, U.
So, A, U, U, A is the first base, U is the second base, U is the third base.
Yeah.
So where is that, let's look in your chart right there.
We have A.
So here's, the first base is A, that's the first base, then U is the second base, you know what's the last one? A, U, was it?
That is right. And then the second one is C.
I, A, C.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's isolucine, so let's write that out.
G, U.
So this would be.
Arginine, arginine.
What's C, G, U?
It's, um, one's listening, what's it, C. Listening, Barry.
No, no, C. G.
C.
C is the first base.
Thirty.
C is the second base. U, so it's arginine.
Yep, thirty in the minute.
So that one, codon.
So what about A, C, G now?
It's.
Thirty.
Nothing to see.
It doesn't matter, any of these would be the same, is it three and E?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's isolucene, arginine, three and E.
Three and E.
Okay.
So each of the, the codons are the set of. Three sets of three, or is it?
No, 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 three bases in a row is one codon.
Okay.
And that one code, this particular codon codes for isolucine.
That's a type of amino acid.
Codon codes for R G N.
These are all amino acids, they're just different types.
And you do have, you have, you have a chart?
Yes.
I'm not, give me another one, I've got plenty. Want another?
I'll take one too, why not? I probably, I mean, I don't have folders separating this stuff yet, cause I'm terrible this year, but.
This is, the first one I handed out's a little different, but I, I like this one just a little better.
Well, it hasn't been, but, yeah, this is, this is the accepted, different types of. You're just kidding, yeah. Other one, Ra- Ralph for short one over here.
Okay, I got more, you know, have.
No, no, it's okay, I have one, and, 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 and I.
I prefer this chart to the one I gave you up first, this is the one I gave you up second, but I mean, it doesn't matter to me, uh, whichever one you like.
That's it.
Um, any others?
Yeah, the one, the one you gave out first was harder to read anyways.
I think this is a little easier, just that it's cranked.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway, so actually, what you were saying, what was the question? Actually, you were asking.
Um, the, the actual three letters itself is considered a base, but what's.
This is a codon, no, these three cod- these three bases is one codon.
Okay, alright.
And, and each codon codes for.
One amino acid. And if you need three amino acids, you made it in a messenger RNA, well then you have three codons. Set up three makes one protein. Or one amino acid. And then, the generally, three amino acids, you get one protein. Yes, they do start.
Okay, transcription was when we took DNA and RNA copy, that's transcription. When this messenger RNA feeds through the ribosome, that's called translation. And, and, well, that's when it translates. The, um, each codon, and this, this amino acid is put in place. Who holds amino acids to bring them? Remember, protein synthesis is complicated. We didn't go into all the details, I just gave you the basic idea. But protein synthesis involves. All three types of RNA. Multiple types of RNA, one type is messenger RNA. Okay, that, that's what. This is messenger RNA, and has the message from the, from the DNA. Then, what's that, the second kind, ribosomal RNA? This. Makes up ribosomes. Ribosomal proteins.
That's when the, the, uh, the readers.
They're the factory.
Yeah, that's, and there's.
I call them the factory, the protein synthesis factory, I'll write that up in a second. What's the third kind of messenger, oh, I'm sorry.
The proofreader?
Transfer RNA, and why is transfer RNA so important?
Because it gives, uh, the instructions.
Well, it contains the anticodon.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which can read the message.
Yes.
Which.
Produces.
Reads the codon. Anticodons, which read the codons. On messenger RNA. Okay, that's fine, we have something that can read it, but so what else does transfer RNA have? What's it contain? Each one contains one.
Amino acid.
So it contains the anticodon and the amino acids.
To build the proteins with.
To make the proteins, exactly, one anticodon. And one amino acid.
Makes from protein?
Per one transfer RNA. And there's sixty-three different transfer RNAs, no, sixty-one different. Sixty-one different. amino acids, amino acids, is that what the question was?
Yeah.
I heard protein, but you meant amino acids, what was the question? But, but, but they're coding for twenty amino acids. And so there's sixty-three different, sixty-one different, so that's why you can have several different codons coding for the same amino acid. There's some that there's only one, one different one, but why, why is sixty-one rather than sixty-four? Cause there's sixty-four possibilities. Three of those codons are, stop.
Okay.
Called the punctuation marks. So three of the codons. Stop. Punctuation marks, they're like periods, you finish the sentence, you finish the protein. Which mean. In other words, if this, if you have a stop codon on a messenger RNA, and it's feeding through the ribosome, it says we're done making the protein. A stop, which mean, which means the protein is done. Done, done. Can you repeat what the ribosome? The protein synthesis factory.
On the question that says, what is meant by a codon, we just say it's the three bases of messenger RNA.
That codes for?
One amino acid.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, right?
Three bases of?
Three bases of messenger RNA.
Oh, strands.
Three bas- three bases on a messenger RNA strand, it codes for one amino acid.
Cause others, those are the nitrogen spaces. Well, cause there's only, well, there's four tech, yeah, four of them. Four nitrogenous spaces?
Yeah, four bases. A, T, U, and C, G.
Yeah.
A, C, U, and G.
Are, um, are like mRNA and the, um.
A, T, C.
Molecules?
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are, those are nucleic acids, right? What's a nucleic acid? Just a string of nucleotides. And if they're the right kinds of nucleotide, you string them together, you make a DNA molecule, if they're the other kind, you make an RNA molecule. They're a little bit different, you know, the, the sugars are a little bit different.
Okay, cause they asked what, uh, molecules are codons located in?
So, yeah, so codons are on which kind?
Oh, what kind of RNA?
Oh, it's messenger RNA, right?
Uh, yeah, I know, I, I didn't know what was.
Not what I said, how did I write it?
It says, um, on, on what molecules are codons located?
On messenger, messenger RNA.
I mean, those, some of those questions are meant to be really easy, others are meant to be long and brawls and delicate.
Find that on messenger RNA here.
How about some other questions? Oh yeah, don't worry about the, don't, I, I didn't get into it, we didn't have time to get into it, it's just that the anticodon can read the codons. It's, it's gonna be that.
It's like a visa through like a tape, or is the way they describe it.
Something that can read the codons, and that's, what does he?
And it has proofreaders.
But it's the transfer RNA that holds on, each one holds on to an amino acid, and where's all this, where, where is all this happening, what are we talking about?
Uh, further still happening in, inside of the, the, um.
Right here, this guy.
In the ribosomes, yeah.
The ribosome, so all happening here in the ribosome. The ribosome itself is just a little particle made of ribosomal RNA and ribosomal proteins. But the messenger RNA comes feeding through, remember the ribosome was, the way I originally put it, picture, this is the picture that you'll use to see. Looked kind of like this.
And then the.
Messenger RNA comes feeding through like this.
Tape, yeah.
This is messenger RNA. And, you know, you've got the bases picking up here and that, and then the transfer RNAs will come down and read this, and they have their.
So it looks like you're scared, it's no more.
No, 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 this happens, right, and these are tiny little guys. They're, they're, you probably in any one of your cells, you have hundreds of thousands of ribosomes in any one cell, they're tiny, tiny, tiny.
That's what messes me up, cause I.
But remember, I've said this before, if you asked me, what, if, if you wanted me to say, what's the most important single event that any cell is performing? I would say protein synthesis, cause the proteins do all the work. And the proteins break down, proteins don't last, so you make a protein, it might last for a week or two or something, they'll break down, so you keep on making them. And most of the proteins are enzymes, probably, you know, they're all those chemical reactions. So, you're constantly making messenger RNA, and it's constantly feeding through ribosomes, you're constantly making protein, this is an important thing, you know, for yourself. That sort of makes sense?
Yeah.
Did we cover most of the topics, or are there?
Yeah, pretty much.
What about the building blocks of DNA?
Nucleotides.
This was so long ago.
I know, but I won't ask you that specific question, cause that was so long ago, wasn't it?
Right there.
Oh, what's it say? What's it say?
DNA is known to be the thematic material. What are the building blocks of DNA, and how many different building blocks are there? What are the letter designations for each of the building blocks?
Oh, those are for the.
A, T, C, and G.
Yeah, A, T, C, and G. For DNA.
So the nucleotides, and, but, you know.
Yeah.
And you want the full name, but we don't, we just use letters, A, T, C, and G. And that, and that's so. So here, here, then.
Arginine, thiamine. Cytosine and.
And it is double stranded helix, with the complex base bearing. All that sort of stuff, huh?
I have other things going on in my head.
I don't doubt. I know, love that one. So, so Jerry's gonna put it for him like the guy that far side. Fisher, could you stop? My brain's full.
But see, I found out that, that, it, I don't know if it gets full, it just sometimes seems to force other stuff out. Like, I can remember all this, and then I forget somebody's phone number.
Yeah, well, no. See, that's the thing, it's not like you don't have room for all you do, but I mean, there are a lot of distractions in the.
Well, yeah, I, I know, I, I, I can store information until I'm three hundred, according to, uh. Neil, uh, DeGrasse Tyson, so, yeah, yeah, three hundred years I got. So is that it? One last thing? Alright, what was the question?
Mutation.
Uh-oh.
Now, the word mutation, the simple, again, you can give fancy definitions, but the simplest mutation from my perspective. Would be a change in one of these bases, that causes a change in the message, which causes a change in the codon. So let's just say, let's just say, something happened, I mean, I don't know what, let's just say something happened, um, and we'll say right here. Um, we're gonna say this guy right here, C, if something happened and changed this. To a T, okay, and, and this got changed to an A somehow, then what happens here? This becomes, instead of a G, what's it become?
An A.
Comes an A, okay, so now, down here, this is an A, now I need to look at the chart to see what we're, what C, A, U. Code for, who has your chart?
C, A, U is a.
Histidine?
Yes.
Okay, so then, so suddenly, if, if that happened, then, then this particulars, this particular strand, instead of coding for the isolucine R G N three D. Isolucine histidine in three D, in other words, it would change which amino acid it's coding for.
And that's how you get the adamantium.
A change, a mutation is a change in a, in one of the bases on DNA, it'll cause maybe. It might cause, remember I said it didn't have to always cause a change, but in this case, it did cause a change. I changed, I made the mutation on the DNA, which changes the message, which changed the codon.
And that would happen because something slipped through the ribosome and the proofreading.
Could have been, it could have been, you know, when this was being made, it could have been radiation.
Oh, right, right, right.
Could be all kinds of things, it could have happened.
So, we, we should have first.
Say, I'm sorry.
In the DNA, not the RNA?
So I'm saying, it changed the D, uh, one, I changed one nucleotide of DNA, which of course caused a change of the message. Which in this case caused a change on the.
But there won't, what she's asking is there won't ever be a change, there's no mutations in RNA?
Oh, yeah, could, that could happen too, absolutely.
From radiation, same thing, yeah.
I'm just giving you, you know, kind of a little broader definition of you.
Okay, no, that's cool.
And as I say, you can make a fancy definition.
We, we, we don't need to make things fancy, that's fine. I'm, and, and, yeah, you know, my dad always says, form follows function, I don't need. So I don't buy Apple. No, it's not, I always thought, if you, if you're gonna use computers, you should know something about.
Now, it's gonna be some good ideas for the exam too, cause I, I, I don't wanna make it super long and super hard, so I, I, I can kinda skip it. You, you get extra credit. So technically, we did get, they give it to us.
Alright. I was gonna say, as far as all that, um. The stuff about the messenger RNA, there's one, one of the tapes, or, uh, video says something about it. Alright, so we're done, there we go. Okay, folks, study hard, do well on your test, this is gonna cost you lots of money, bye.